I'll call out the City Council meeting to order. First item is, I'm gonna call the second oldest council member on the City Council, the latest in the pledge. Notice, I did say second oldest.
Mayor, before I do, I would like to ask everybody to pause for just a moment and think how blessed we are to live in a nation where we are free to gather and do this and voice our concerns one to another and not have anybody molest us or create problems for us because we do want to express our feelings. It's a blessing that many people in the world do not have. And reflect on that for just a moment and think about how grateful we should be to be able to meet and do what we're about to do tonight. Now, if you will join me in the pledge to the flag for this great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We also, I've also have with us tonight to do our invocation is Wayne Hancock of the, one of the newest ministers at Cross Timbers Church Christ, right, the newest minister, big minister at Cross Timbers Church Christ.
We will pray with me. Almighty God, our gracious Father and King, Father, we thank you for all your blessing of us. We thank you for the blessing of being citizens of this great city of Stevieville. Father, I just ask for your presence and guidance here this evening. May you give all the leaders of our city minds to know you, hearts to love you, and ears to hear your voice. Father, I ask that you bless this council with wisdom in all their decisions. May all the decisions made here tonight be for the common good and for the blessing of every citizen of this community from the least to the greatest. Father, may all the decisions be made for justice and be for the welfare and protection of those they were elected to represent. Father, grant this council knowledge in their decisions, ears to hear the voice of the people, feet that pursue justice and courage to do what is right. Father, we just ask for your blessing of abundance, peace, and justice for our city and for the great state of Texas. In your son's name, we pray.
Thank you. We have some pretty cool things going on tonight. And the first one we're gonna do is have the Mayor's Youth Council, Ella, to give you, Ella is the historian for the Mayor's Youth Council and has some words for us tonight.
Good evening.
Take as long as you want, unlike all of us, take as long as you want.
Yes, sir. Good evening, City Council members. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Ella Shaw. I'm a sophomore in high school and attend White Horse Christian Academy. I have the privilege of serving on the inaugural Stevieville Youth Mayor Council and have the opportunity to serve our community as well as the people around us. This Mayor's Youth Council is a new opportunity for high school and junior high students and currently consists of six members and began in September of 2024. We have three elected positions, President, held by Kinley Pack, Vice President, held by Hudson Music, and Historian, held by me. This carefully appointed youth council meets monthly and we are privileged to learn about different aspects of our city along with special guests that serve in different roles. This council has taught my peers and I so much about how city governments run, to the Texas economy, and beyond. Our City Council has developed, our Youth Council has developed leadership opportunities over the last couple months, along with the chance to meet many elected officials such as City Manager Jason King, Shelby Slosson, and Lieutenant Governor Patrick. On April 10th, four members of the Mayor's Youth Council had the opportunity to travel to our state Capitol in Austin and had the privilege to be recognized in the House Chamber by our State Representative Shelby Slosson. Several of our city and community leaders also got to come along for various meetings. It was a great privilege. We met with Representatives Slosson and Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick and were able to tour parts of the Capitol that were not open to the public. I enjoyed meeting Dan Hunter as he explained all about how agriculture affected Texas and led us through an underground tunnel. One of my favorite things was getting to see Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick's office along with his Alamo room that held a handcrafted miniature Alamo battle along with other Alamo collectibles. He had many trinkets, such as football helmets, clocks, and coins that he had collected throughout his time in office. I have truly loved this experience and new relationships I've developed throughout this council. This youth council has been an amazing resource for me and I'm sure my peers will say the same thing. I want to say a special thank you to Sarah Lochner and J.C. Wood for putting together this council and organizing everything. One of my goals is to apply and to attend the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. This experience has given me perspective and opportunities that will help impact my future. Thank you.
Thank you for being on the council. Lieutenant Governor was not supposed to meet with us that day and he came out because of my counsel and got to meet with them. Y'all got pictures, right? He's pretty cool. He came off the floor of the Senate specifically to visit with us and I appreciate him doing that. And thanks to Sarah and her setting all that up. We have some awards to give away.
So if the youth council participants would join me here, I have a certificate and a gift from the city for you and then we'll take a photo. So.
If you look at the future leaders of Stevieville right here, in E wrath County.
So I just wanna thank you all for participating in this program, going into it the first year. We didn't really know what to expect or how to go about it, but I think y'all made the year well worthwhile and we can't wait for next year. So would you like to join us for a picture?
Sure.
Oh, wait, there's eight.
One more.
When those individuals are on City Council, Sarah's already recognized and taught them how to do it, like she teaches us. Next item is a presentation. I'm gonna turn this over to Daryl Brown about tourism. Daryl, would you come up to the board, to the, or you wanna do that? Introduce the idea. We have a special idea, a special recognition from about Texas tourism.
Mayor and council, I'd like to invite Ally Whitworth. Ally, where are you? Ally is our tourism manager and she'll introduce our, she'll introduce our guests that we have with us today to present us a tourism certification.
Howdy, Mayor and Council. I'm so happy to introduce Madeline Phillips from the Texas Tourism Office and the Governor's Office of Economic Development.
Thank you guys so much for having me today. It was thankfully a beautiful drive. We've had a little bit of rain in the whole country, so I really appreciate the opportunity being able to come down here and present in person. The certification was brand new last year, so you're one of our first 40 communities to ever receive the designation and it's a really big deal for us. Sorry?
We are special.
You are very special, definitely in Stevieville. But I just wanted to say a couple of words, that's all right, and please, if you guys have any questions about the certification and program, feel free to ask. And then of course, Ally and Daryl were integral into the certification as well, so lots of great information. I'm from the Office of the Governor Economic Development and Tourism Office. Our brand name is Travel Texas. It's a little easier to say than Office of the Governor Economic Development and Tourism. But I'd just like to highlight a couple of great achievements that you guys have within your community in the form of tourism and visitor economy. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm honored to present Visit Stevieville, also known as Visit the Ville, with the official tourism-friendly Texas Community Certification. This recognition is not just ceremonial. It represents Stevieville's commitment to tourism as a core strategy for economic development and community identity. Despite a population of just over 21,600 people, Stevieville draws in an impressive volume of visitors each year. That activity contributes an estimated 76.7 million in direct travel spending, generating more than $2 million in local taxes and 4.58 million in state tax revenue. These are dollars that directly benefit your residents, funding local services, infrastructure, and quality of life. This achievement reflects the vision and hard work of the Visit Stevieville team who've led this effort as one of the first 40 communities in the state to earn this distinction. Not long ago, tourism was handled through the City Manager's Office and today, with your full-time tourism hire and committed two-person team, formerly Michaela and now Ailee, or Ally, excuse me, the city is laying a strong foundation for sustainable growth. I'd also like to mention that Ally is a very rare resource in the state of Texas and the United States in general. I myself have a degree in tourism and I am one of the very rare few. And the fact that you have Ally in your community and she has a degree and has been trained in this is pretty rare and it's really special. You're investing in your future from consistent advertising in Texas highways to participation in the music and film friendly certification programs. You're laying the groundwork for stronger visibility and deeper community involvement. Looking ahead, some next big projects on the horizon, as mentioned by your team, show how deeply rooted tourism is in your community's priorities and strategic plan. The downtown revitalization and historic preservation efforts, including the Cowboy Walk of Fame with bronze plaque plaques honoring legendary rodeo figures, a coffee table book that will celebrate your cowboy heritage and help preserve the brand of Stevieville, and then wayfinding signage and an expanded downtown placemaking strategy to make your plaza and city center more walkable and welcoming. In the long term, your vision is clear, to build a foundational, community-connected tourism strategy that consolidates your brand pillars and deepens local engagement. And if budget were a barrier, we like to always ask the participants what they would do if they had all the money in the world to develop tourism. And some of the ideas they threw out were downtown visitor center and a convention center, paired with a signature welcome to the ville signage, investments that would reinforce your identity and enhance the visitor experience. This certification isn't a finish line, it's a milestone and a path of continued growth. Tourism is economic development, but it's also civic pride, placemaking, and preservation. Congratulations to the entire team at Visit Stevieville and to your community. We are proud to welcome you as a tourism-friendly certified community.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we do that, I just wanna recognize Lee and Councilwoman Lee and Durfee also, who's involved greatly in our tourism stuff. Thank you for your leadership there.
By the way, our tourism certificate was bigger than the music or the phone certificate.
By the way, about seven years ago or eight, we became a Texas music friendly and movie friendly city as well.
And we have a, one more certification at the state and we get on board calling it the grand slam.
And what did it, tell her and tell. Next item on the agenda, general discussion. We have one, oh wait a minute, we have a lifetime award as well. So I guess the two chiefs?
Yes, sir.
Just one chief or both chiefs?
Just one.
Okay, take it over.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, on Sunday, March 23rd, 2025, at approximately 1:00 a.m., E wrath County Sheriff's Deputy Taylor Tully was dispatched to a stabbing in progress on County Road 461 situated just outside the city limits of Stevieville off of FM 8. Officer Stone responded to assist her due to the critical nature of this emergency call. Upon arriving at the scene, Officer Stone observed Deputy Tully administering CPR to an unresponsive male victim. The victim had sustained multiple lacerations and puncture wounds on his body, including wounds on both of his legs. As Deputy Tully continued with CPR, Officer Stone immediately applied a tourniquet to each of the victim's legs to control the profuse bleeding. The suspect's location was unknown at this particular moment, making the scene unsecure. Yet these two law enforcement officers did not hesitate to administer lifesaving medical techniques to save this victim. While providing aid, Officer Stone communicated with dispatch via radio indicating that the suspect may be on foot in close proximity. Additional assistance was requested, including a law enforcement drone. He also advised dispatch to begin coordinating a medevac life flight. During the same period, Deputy Tully was continuing to perform CPR. And once the tourniquets were applied, Deputy Tully and Officer Stone assessed the victim's current status. They determined the victim now was breathing and detected a shallow pulse. They proceeded to assess the victim for further injuries and located, identified a deep puncture wound to his chest. Deputy Tully and Officer Stone utilized gauze from one of their medical kits to apply pressure to this wound. It was now determined that the suspect had fled in a vehicle and therefore the scene was rendered safe for medical personnel to enter. For just under 10 minutes, Deputy Tully and Officer Stone maintained uninterrupted medical care until E wrath County EMS was able to assume care. As noted in a previous City Council meeting, the city and county critical care paramedics from both agencies continued lifesaving, advanced lifesaving measures, including the use of whole blood until this victim was flown to Fort Worth for advanced care. E wrath County EMS and Stevieville Fire Department paramedics advised that the actions of these two, Officer Stone and Deputy Tully, saved the victim's life. Without their immediate and timely intervention, the administration of tourniquets and CPR, the victim's chances of survival were significantly, would have been significantly diminished. Deputy Tully and Officer Stone immediately and without hesitation placed themselves in harm's way to save this victim's life. Their heroic actions truly exemplify top-notch professionalism, the top-notch professionalism of the men and women of both the E wrath County Sheriff's Department and the Stevieville Police Department and our entire law enforcement profession. Deputy Tully, Officer Stone, you both are receiving the Stevieville Police Department's lifesaving award, of which they have received the same joint award from the E wrath County Sheriff's Department. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please join me in recognizing their great work?
And now we're to the next item, which is general discussion. We have one person, we have three different times when people get to speak, so don't worry. First one is Christian Lightfoot. Is Christian here? Christian, if you'll stand up and give us your name and your address and you'll have three minutes and there'll be a clock on the wall here on the screen.
My name is Christian Lightfoot. If it's okay, I'm going to not give my address for my profession. Good afternoon, I'm Officer Lightfoot and I'm here representing the Stevieville Police Association. I know there is currently some tension between us on the issue of pay. I'm here today to have you, the members of council, reflect on what it is the POA is truly asking for. I'll start with what we are not asking for. We are not asking to get rich or for anything that is not earned. We are simply asking for safety and security. We're asking for enough staffing so that we and the public in which we all serve can thrive in a safe community. With our current staffing level, a major crash will take up an entire shift, leaving other calls to hold until other officers are able to break free. As officers, it would be comforting to know that there is backup coming if we need it and not just to hope that someone will be there. We are simply asking for us and the public to be able to return home safely to our loved ones at the end of each day. We are also asking for security, the security to be able to provide a decent home for us to raise and lead our families, the security to know that if a pipe bursts or the AC unit goes out, that we will have funds to take care of it. goes out, that we will have funds to take care of it. We're asking to be able to provide our spouses with decent transportation to get to work without the fear of it breaking down. We're asking it to be, excuse me, we're asking to be able to feel comfortable with starting a family without the fear the child will not have everything it needs. I'm 31 years old. I would love to start a family and have a child, have my first child with my wife. However, we do not feel it would be financially responsible to do so, even with me working for the city and her being a full-time teacher. We are simply asking to be able to provide our families with an average life. You have some of the finest men and women working for you, and we will do whatever it takes to take care of you and the citizens of this great city. I simply ask that our city leadership take care of us in return. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item is place one, three, five, and seven. Sarah has asked you to come down in front, be sworn in.
Right, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Frank Andrew.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
The City Council.
The City Council.
State your place.
Place one.
Of the city of Stevieville.
Of the city of Stevieville.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
When we get back to the seats, I'm gonna let each one of them say something that they'd like. Ms. Durfee, since you're place one.
I just want to thank everybody for supporting us over the, this is starting my third term, so, third time to do this, and I appreciate everybody that's been there for me. My husband and my son are here tonight, my mother, and I couldn't do what I had to do to be here. And I'm thrilled that tonight was also the night that we were, got to celebrate tourism, since that's been my committee for the whole time, and it's, we have a lot of exciting things coming, and I appreciate sitting in this seat for another two years.
Well, I just want to thank the community for the faith they have in me. I take this job very seriously. I take it they hear the senior citizens, citizens, and the businesses and the youth of this community that are a top priority to all of us, and I just want to thank you very much they have the faith to put me back in this seat again for the next two years.
I'd be honored to continue to serve the community of Stevieville, and I would just like to thank my family for supporting me along this journey. It does take a lot away from our houses and our homes, more than people think, but without my husband's support, my parents' support, I just want them to know that I appreciate them dearly, and I look forward to serving the community for two more years.
I'd like to thank the community of Stevieville for giving me the honor to serve you. I'd like to thank my family, my wife Karen, and my sons for their support, and I'd like to enjoy the community's support as we work to serve the city of Stevieville. Thank you.
I just want to say each of these four council people, councilwomen and men, they did a great job. It takes dozens of hours, the work that they do, and I appreciate the hard work and sometimes the phone calls and other things, so, but thank you all very much for your service. It's been fun working with you. Next item is we'll take, I'll be taking nominations for mayor pro temp.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate David Baskett to be mayor pro temp for this next year.
Second that, Mayor.
Have a motion as second. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Here you go, and we'll close the nominations then, and proceed to vote, all in favor of David Baskett being mayor pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, David. I hope I don't have another stroke, you have to work so hard.
I hope.
I hope you don't either.
Thank you. Okay, consider approval of Stevieville Police Departments and Fire Departments mural project. I guess that's you again, Dan.
Yes, sir.
You're a popular guy tonight.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Stephanie Beach is joining me here, and as you'll notice in your packet, for quite some, actually a long time we've been talking about it, even though I mentioned in there that this past semester, we began really formally trying to make this project a reality. You have a picture of the artist rendition in your packet also of that mural. The fire chief has worked with me on this also, and so asking for your approval for the south side about midway through, just to the fire base and our evidence room, is this joint mural that we would like for her class as the artist in resident at Charleston State University, make sure I say that correctly. Her class, as they finish this semester, which is really close to being through, paint that mural on the police department and fire station number one, south wall. And be happy to answer any questions that you may have, again.
When y'all get started?
Tomorrow.
Weather, weather.
Well, we don't ever fuss about rain in Texas.
Yes, sir. No, sir, we're very thankful for the rain delays. Yes, sir.
Thank you for what you're doing for us. And for y'all, I had seen this, I wish we could get that on, is there any way to get that on the screen tonight so everybody can see it?
It's not color, but it'll be in color.
It's in the, in the packet, it is in color.
My print, my print is not a color.
A smaller version here.
We'll get a picture on the website when it's finished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate what you're doing. Anybody else want to say something?
Need a vote, or?
Take a vote, please.
We need a vote to approve, is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion that we approve the mural project on station one for the Stevieville Police Department and Fire Department.
Second. Okay, we have a second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That was unanimous, Dan.
Thank you, sir. So noted, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Next item is the airport pump station extension project, is that you, Nick?
Yes, sir.
One of the hardest working men in Stevieville, Texas, right there.
Thank you, Mayor.
You get out here before 8:00 every night?
I do try, but usually.
Remember what I told you happens if I don't, if I see your light on up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Well, good evening, Mayor Council. The airport pump station is a project we entered into in the very end of 2021. It was part of a multi-stage set of projects to increase our supply, and it included a new pump station, but most importantly, a 1 million gallon ground storage tank that doubled our capacity to serve the east side of the city. And so what we're doing here tonight is asking for the acceptance of that project. It was awarded to Red River Construction Company for just under $3.8 million, and concluded for that exact amount, $3,797,061 and 50 cents exactly. We've received all of our confirmation from the engineer of record, and reached out to all of the subcontractors to make sure that they were paid as well before we came to you with acceptance. There is a resolution attached also. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Nick. Here you go, your motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution 2025 R-07 to make the final payment for the airport pump station extension project.
Yeah, man, I think I need to go see how big that project is. It is huge. Okay, Brandon, is that you?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's resolution 2025 R-07?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item, consider approval of resolution nominating FMC Technologies, I guess, just gonna do that one? Uh-oh. Put the clock back up, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We concentrate a lot at CETA in new recruitment and doing a lot of great things that are new to our area, but we also have to recognize that there are a lot of wonderful things that are already in place that, that not only impact our employee count, our local base, our sponsorships, and everything else. Mr. Cook, Councilman Cook would certainly know about this particular one, being that he was very heavily, if not the, the person responsible for bringing them here to begin with, but FMC has been a major player in our community for more than 40 years, and they are now at another point where they are looking to expand into our community even more, which anytime an expansion occurs with a local manufacturer, that usually is a generational move, and one that allows for even longer commitment to an, an area. So what we're doing today is asking the council to do basically a technical move, and that is to sponsor or a nomination to Texas Enterprise Zone for an enterprise project through the state to help with this expansion. We have three people here to speak on that, two are from Kroll Company, we have Doug Hines and Emma Coney, and then we have Jason Ripley from here locally, that most of you guys know him, from, from FMC, and they'll talk to you a little bit about this, and hopefully not too long, but this is a great project that we support.
We get all over Jeff about his, how long he talks. How was for Jeff?
Mayor Council, my name is Doug Hines, I'm with a company called Kroll, we're a site selection and tax incentives advisory firm. We're here tonight on behalf of FMC Technologies to request your support through a nominating resolution for the company to participate in the Texas Enterprise, Enterprise Zone Program. The Texas Enterprise Zone Program is an incentive designed to retain businesses and attract new businesses to the state of Texas. It provides a refund of the state portion of sales and use tax on qualified expenditures, of which they're anticipating $15 million in improvements over the next five years. It doesn't have any impact on, on, on local taxes, and would help the company continue to invest and, and grow here in the city of Stevieville. And we'd be planning to submit this application at the next quarterly round, it's quarterly submissions, so, so June 3rd, and then the office of the governor would, would make the final determination if the project is approved. So this would be a, a resolution that's stating that this is a qualified project that the city of Stevieville is in support of. And it's a great tool, just as an FYI, you, you get six nominations per biennium, so this would represent one, but it's a great tool for all, all, all businesses who may be expanding or, or bringing new investment to the community.
Just remind the governor, he says 97% of his support is in E wrath County, he told me.
All right.
This is his biggest Republican stronghold, he told me at dinner one night.
That's pretty good support right there.
Just reminding that y'all are in E wrath County.
Yep, yep. So we're here to answer any questions pertaining to the program, and then, and then if you have any questions pertaining to the project, we can answer those as well.
You want to speak?
I can speak if you guys have any questions, but just echo the same thing that Doug said.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, you guys know the company, it's been around a long time, don't plan on going anywhere. We've moved two new product lines in the last three years, continue to invest, don't see that changing, so just need a little support on this one.
Jeff kind of underplayed a little bit, but if it weren't for this gentleman right here, we wouldn't have FMC in Stevieville, Texas. He's the one that, through the chamber, worked how many hundreds of hours, thousands of hours probably, to get that group to here, so, all the hundreds and hundreds of employees over the years, and the sales tax collected, and the property taxes, et cetera, it's thanks to Gerald Cook. So everybody needs a patting on the back, it has a big impact, y'all made a big impact on our community.
Not only that, y'all are a huge supporter of the community for all school organizations and other local organizations for fundraising, and we do appreciate all that you do for the community and all the services that y'all provide.
Thank you.
With that, your motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve resolution 2025 dash R dash 08, Texas Enterprise Zone Program for FMC.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, if I might add a couple of things.
Of course.
FMC has been a tremendous asset to the city of Stevieville, and we appreciate all the things that you do, as our, my fellow council member said, you, you are a good community member, you support so many things, activities and, and people in the community through employment and through other things, and we appreciate that. We look forward to working with you all in the future, we look forward to a good cooperative partnership between FMC and the city of Stevieville, and helping us both grow and helping us both flourish then. But thank you for all that you do.
Yes, sir.
And I want, like Mayor said, we really appreciate what you've done. I remember back when John Moore was, was at FMC, and everything that he started, I think has kept right on going forward all these years, so we appreciate you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you all very much. Next item is consider approval of Text dot city pride sign agreement. You gonna do that on Daryl?
Yes, sir.
I called you up earlier, you could have jumped in and done both at the same time.
I thought you would have let me, I wouldn't.
You know, maybe I always advocate what you want.
Mayor, City Council, you've, you've heard earlier about our wayfinding sign project, and they're part of a coordinated and continuous system of signs that help direct our tourists and other road users to key and civic, cultural visitor and recreational attractions within the city or in our downtown area. And so the staff is asking for the council to approve the citywide sign agreement, which Text dot has asked us to get completed so that we can move on, move forward with the implementation of our wayfinding sign project, and all of you have that information in front of you today, so we just need you to, to approve us entering into that city pride sign agreement.
Great to do, Leeanne, you're involved in this project too, aren't you?
Yes.
Again, some of your leadership, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Daryl?
What's the time, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dave.
What's the timeline on these two?
Provided that we get this signed tonight, then we'll move forward with, forward at the Text dot and give them a week or two to review, and then we hope to have the signs all done by, you know, probably by the middle of June or first July.
Time for the football field opening?
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say one thing.
Okay.
I appreciate all the hard work that Daryl has helped us do. We started this before he came to the city, and I appreciate you very much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
With that, you want to make a motion? Or you have next, Nick?
Yes.
The number of signs, Mr. Brown, that we're gonna erect will be?
Yes, sir, that's in the packet, so there's 27 of them.
27.
Total.
And they're all in Text dot right away?
Yes, sir.
And they all direct any traveler to the highlights of our community and the places of historic value and other things.
If they choose to look at it, it's.
Well, we, we can't control that.
Right.
But we make.
That's, that is, that is the, the, the purpose of it, sir.
It's to help them find their way to, to the things that we think are relevant and tourism-worthy, and also safety-related.
Correct, yes, sir.
And I appreciate the work that you've done on this, and I know it, it's not a project you initiated, but, but you grabbed it and you ran with it, and I appreciate that.
Well, I, I can't take all the credit. Our city manager, Nick Williams, have been very helpful in getting this done, and so I appreciate their guidance and support in getting it completed.
This, as many things, is a team effort, isn't it?
It, it is a team effort.
Amen.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, a motion.
Mayor, I make the motion, oh, go ahead, Leeanne.
No, no.
I make the motion to approve our agreement with Text dot for the wayfinding signs.
Second.
Have a motion, take it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Which killing, it's your turn again.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Have a few things for you tonight, gonna start with application 8714, it's a rezone. This is for property out on the Alexander Highway. It's brought to us by Ms. Megan Leatherwood, representing 500 Investment Corporation, asking for a rezone of zero Alexander Road, which is approximately 17.46 acres of the John B. DePuy abstract, asking for a rezone from R1 single-family to single-family R1.5. R1.5 allows for a smaller lot dimension of 50 by 100. The developer with this rezone request, assuming it moves forward, will come back to us with a preliminary plat once the site plan is finalized. We do have a site plan that's a draft at the current moment in the, the packet for your review, and you can see that this is the adjacent property to the Elk Ridge addition. It is an unplatted property, and at one point, I believe it was considered a phase of Elk Ridge, but it is an unplatted property, and by legal plating purposes, not necessarily a part of Elk Ridge specifically. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on April 16, 2025. At that time, we had a total of nine speaker cards that were filed, all in opposition, two letters of opposition. Two letters of opposition were also submitted, and at that time, the commission's recommendation to deny the rezone had a vote of two to five, and so that motion failed. No additional motion was made, so it comes to City Council without a recommendation. In preparation for tonight's meeting, we received a total of fifteen letters of opposition, and there was a petition filed earlier last week, and the city secretary's office went through the process of verifying that petition. It did not end up with the twenty percent vote required or the twenty percent participation required, and so with that, this can move forward with a majority vote instead of a simple or a supermajority vote. This, by the comprehensive plan, is area designated as a complete neighborhood under the Stevieville 2050.
What kind neighborhood?
Complete neighborhood, which would mean it would allow for multiple housing styles and then also for some retail on any major corridor streets in the, in the zone. So this, again, is for a rezone to a smaller lot dimension, R1.5, fifty by one hundred. The developer has mentioned that most of the lots are averaging about eighty-four hundred, but they do have smaller frontages in some areas within the development, and they are looking at approximately sixty-five single-family homes in this development should the site plan work once detention and setbacks and everything is taken into consideration. The R point one gross allowance for this development would be about a hundred and four properties, a hundred and four different lots. That's not really what you can net, but the question was asked at a P&amp;Z meet, at the P&amp;Z meeting, what that may allow in the R point one, and it's just without knowing exactly what the site plan looks like, how the streets are lined out, what the setbacks are going to be, you can't really determine exactly what the, the net lot allowance would be. So with that, Mayor, Council be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve.
Steve, I have a question. I know a lot of our letters of oppositions and emails and phone calls and Facebook messages and smoke signals and everything else that we've got during, during this, one of the main concerns is, is traffic in that area, and I was wondering what the, what we need to do to alleviate that and maybe put a Knox Gate up in between the two subdivisions where only the fire department has access to get through to the, between the two properties.
Yes, sir. I know that was a discussion item brought into consideration, and I'll probably have to defer to the fire chief on any real specific answers on that, but when we look at the site plan, they do have one road proposed from the Elk Ridge development into the new development. That was a stubout from the original development with Elk Ridge, and so that allows for a secondary means of egress for this property. You can see that the, the two access points on the Alexander Highway allow for entrance into each area independently, but that connecting road would allow for traffic from one development into the other if necessary. Fire marshal, or I'm sorry, the fire chief and I did speak about this briefly today. He gave me a little bit of information on it, and I'll take a shot at it to save him from having to get up through the crowd, but basically the Knox Gate is a, is something that could be permitted. I think in the public safety world and even street maintenance, may not be ideal, but it is an option that, that the council could certainly consider at their, their desire. So Chief Isbell, would you like to add anything to that?
Are you gonna come up? You don't want to?
Would you, would you like to add anything to that, Chief Isbell?
No, I'm sorry. There's nothing that prohibits.
No cause, big say on record?
Sorry, Robert.
Mayor, Council, there's nothing that prohibits the gated aspect between the two, but I would reiterate, both Elk Ridge, the first piece of the development, that stubout was intended to be the secondary means of egress for the future. That's how that was allowed to be built. The second piece being built, again, needs a second means of egress, tying those together meets that intent. But I will say that the gate is not prohibited. We would say it's not ideal, but it's not prohibited.
Any other questions for the chief, why is he here?
I would like to add that if it is gated, that becomes a regulated gate, and nothing can be parked in front or stored in front of that gate to impede access. It'll be treated as a fire lane.
Sure we can get the other chief to enforce that, if that's what happens? Other questions for Steve?
I have one question for Chief Isbell. So you, you've looked over this and the width of the streets and the turns and everything else, and, and you feel okay with it?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Elk Ridge at the present time is this not correct, Chief? Has one ingress and one egress, I mean, that's it right now. This was meant to be a secondary, the street connecting this, but looking at future development out there, and this development obviously is there and being proposed, would give a secondary access or egress to the present Elk Ridge too, correct?
Correct.
So better for fire department?
Absolutely. And, and there's also the concern, it's not just for our access in, it's for also evacuating the residents that live in that, that neighborhood. If there was to be something of disaster nature that was, that's going on in that neighborhood and we needed access in, there's also the probability that that neighborhood needs to be evacuated, needs to exit. And I point to an incident in the Austin area, the Steiner Ranch Fire, where they had a large development, one access road in, and it impeded the flow of emergency resources in because they were trying to evacuate at the same time.
I see. Thank you. Any other questions?
For Mr. Killen?
Or Chief?
Okay.
Either one, you're welcome to say whatever.
Mr. Killen.
Okay, Mr. Killen. Thanks, Robert.
Yes, sir.
One of the concerns that was raised was this width of the streets.
Correct.
The existing streets and then the streets that will be built, but any street that's constructed will be built to city standards.
That is correct.
And specifications as far as width, et cetera.
Yes, sir. Current site plan meets the fifty-foot wide right away, and that would allow for a thirty-one foot wide street back a curb to back a curb, and so that's what you see across most city streets, except for those that were developed many, many years ago before the, the standard was put into place. So this meets current standards, correct?
That's standard for residential areas.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And, and another question was the question of notification for property owners?
Yes, sir.
Do we not have state guidelines that dictate to us how and, and what needs to be sent out?
Yes, sir, we do. That question was brought up during the P&amp;Z meeting. I did address that question, but, so we follow the requirements of the local government code. At P&amp;Z, I said 211, but it's actually Chapter 212. It's, Chapter 212 outlines what the legal notice requirements are for any type of rezone. That is a two-hundred-foot notice around the perimeter of the property to any property within that two-hundred-foot distance. We have to send that letter out within, I believe, ten days before the meeting. We have to have a public notice published in the newspaper sixteen days ahead of the meeting, and then we are required to post it on the city's bulletin board at least seventy-two hours in advance. We met all of those requirements. In the packet, there's a list of the property owners that were notified. I did a quick count on that during the P&amp;Z meeting, and I failed to do that today. I believe it's thirty-eight that were notified, and we get that from a GIS mapping tool from our GIS manager, and so he has a system that, it's not something that we're just drawing out on a piece of paper. It's, it's pretty precise based on the GIS technology that we have. And so we, we met all of those requirements. I can tell you that I take that very seriously, because anything that we approve and we do not meet those legal requirements mandated by the state is not giving due process, and it could actually come back and cause the city to have to retract something that may be approved under the impression that we did meet those requirements. So we, we adhere to that very closely, and we will not call a meeting if, if necessary.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And one more thing, what we are looking at is not a plat, it's a conceptual plan.
That's correct.
Which could be changed, modified virtually in any way bef, to, before it comes for the final plating that it will be developed by, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So this is basically a conceptual plan in some degree. At this point, they have, you know, the developer has actually invested some funding into this to get to this point. I mean, there's, there's some, some cost involved here, so I don't think they'd want to change it up too drastically, but generally with the rezone, we don't even have site plans. We're just looking at, does the property fit with the project, the intended project? So they brought this a little, little advanced notice or earlier in the project than what we would normally see. But to your point, if the rezone is approved, there's, the site plan and preliminary plat could also modify, especially as we get into the civil plan review, and this may not work exactly the way it's intended to work once we look at drainage requirements and things of that nature. So certainly subject to revision along the way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I just have one question. The, the rest of Elk Ridge does not have sidewalks, correct?
That is correct.
But this whole area will have sidewalks throughout every street, every, all of it.
Sidewalk, curb, and gutter, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Steve, in the, some of the letters I've received and also with regard to some of the information that we have, is talking about pad sites and different lot sizes being fifty by one hundred, or most of them are not fifty by one hundred, they're fifty by one hundred and twenty, or fifty by one hundred and fifteen, or something like that. With a typical pad side, I think the smallest one that I saw was like eighteen hundred square feet on the pad side. I think you can go up right now, the way it is on a fifty by one hundred foot lot, up to approximately two thousand square feet per, per that lot. Is that not correct?
So the.
On a fifty by one hundred foot?
Fifty by one hundred. Let me just share some, some land use regulations for the R1.5. Fifty by one hundred lot dimension, it has smaller setbacks than the R1 zoning. It allows for a minimum square footage home of a thousand square feet, but that's the minimum. The, the developer and future builder on that lot can build to a, to the setback limits. So whatever the, in this particular zoning, the fifteen-foot setbacks would have to be honored, and would be fifteen front, fifteen rear, and then I believe six on the sides, that's the buildable area. And so that is the footprint on the ground, but it doesn't limit a second story. And so every home would be by any zoning district, the maximum height of any build is thirty-five foot. So these, these homes may have a smaller footprint, but they may have significant square footage based on the design of the home itself. And I believe with this developer, they're not necessarily looking to build the homes, they're looking to develop the land and then sell the lots. But I do see that Mr. Bishop and Ms. Megan Leatherwood are both here tonight, and I'm failed to mention, we did have those letters and people that spoke in opposition, but we had two people spoken favor, and, and they're here tonight, and they can certainly answer more detailed questions about their, their intended development. But those are the land use regulations for the R1.5.
Thank you. One last question. So when Elk Ridge was originally, and I don't know if you can answer this, originally developed, that's the way it was. It was not sold by the, it was sold by the lots, not by, it wasn't they, Mr. Hanson didn't come in and build the whole neighborhoods and then sell off the houses. I know, I think he built some, but the majority of them were lots that were sold for whoever to build whatever they wanted to build.
I believe that is correct. That was before my time, but that's based on what I, I've heard, I believe that's one hundred percent accurate.
Okay.
Anybody else? Excuse me, my voice is gone. My grandson gave me a cold last week. So Steve?
Yes, sir.
In this R1.15, they can build a two-story house out there?
Yes, sir. Limited by the, the setbacks alone, but they can go second story up to a height of thirty-five feet.
And that's different than the Phase One that's already out there right now?
Uh, Phase One, I'm not sure if they have any two-story builds in Phase One. City manager saying, yes, they do. That was an R1 development. I'm assuming they, they do have larger lot sizes than some being proposed in the new development. To Councilmember Durfee's point, no sidewalks in that area. So there's some features in this development that Elk Ridge doesn't have, but it does, does not meet the same lot dimensions as the R1 requirements would be. They have lots that exceed those R1 requirements, but they, many of them, there are a few that, that meet the fifty by one hundred requirement as well. So they, smaller frontage within this new development.
Any others?
One last question, I should have done it all one time.
It's on recording.
So, so was the, the first section of Elk Ridge, was there a minimal limit to how big you could build your home?
To the maximum size? No.
Was there a minimal?
Only, only a minimal.
Did it have to be two thousand square feet, or eighteen hundred, or thirty, three thousand, whatever? Was there a minimum?
I'm following you now. If that occurred, it would have been through a deed restriction, maybe imposed by the developer. The city land use regulations only set the lower limit. We don't try to cut, we don't try to max it out on maximum build size.
So ours would have been fifteen hundred as an R1, and there were not deed restrictions on home size.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll have public comment here in a minute.
Anybody else? Megan Leatherwood, are you here? Would you like to come speak to us? Did you mention somebody else, Steve, that needs, would like to come visit? Will you give us your name and your address, and you'll appear while you're a three-minute timer?
My name's Megan Leatherwood. Am I good?
Go ahead.
We're good? No, you're good.
You're good.
Okay. My name's Megan Leatherwood. I live at 1035 Antelope Trail. We've lived here, worked here, built here because we believe in Stevieville's future. We're not big box developers. We're neighbors, we're local builders who want to see our community grow in a way that honors its past while preparing for its future. We're at a point where young families, teachers, city staff, first responders can't find places to live here. We've heard it in city meetings, we've heard it from people that we work with day in and day out. Our community is growing, Tarleton is thriving, but we risk pricing people out of the very town they serve. We heard concerns about traff, traffic, safety, and quality from our neighbors at Elk Ridge Estates at the P&amp;Z meeting on April 16th, and I want all my neighbors to know that I heard them, and I understand them, and I care about the same things because I live there too. You've heard some about zoning, some about concerns the neighbors have, but what we're really discussing is who gets to call Stevieville home. That's why we've designed this neighborhood to reflect the values we all share. These are single-family homes that are thoughtfully planned with sidewalks, yards, and architectural standards. This is not high density, this is not multifamily. These are homes for teachers, police officers, city employees, and young families. People who want to put down roots in Stevieville, just like we did many years ago. Our 1.5 zoning ensures that the new homes in Bear Hill will be thoughtfully designed, high-quality and consistent with the character of Elk Ridge Estates. By welcoming well-planned growth, existing homeowners benefit from rising property values, improved neighborhood amenities like sidewalks, and a stronger, more vibrant community that protects and enhances the investment they've already made in their homes. The truth is, Stevieville is growing, Tarleton's growing, but the housing options aren't keeping up. If we want our kids, our employees, our friends, family, our future to stay here, we must make space for them. I'm not asking any of our neighbors, and I'm not asking you to lower standards, I'm asking you to evolve with purpose, to plan with. I'm asking you to evolve with purpose, to plan with intention, to be the kind of city that says, we have room for you too. Thank you for your time, your service and for your consideration.
With that, we're going to enter into-
Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Megan?
Thank you.
And then we'll enter into a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. May I approach again? I need to correct something that I said. I, I believe I said fifteen foot setbacks for R one point five when I was answering Councilman Cook's questions. It's actually a twenty-five foot front and rear setback. So I just want to provide that clarification. That's very, that's identical to R one. And so I just wanted to make sure that I corrected that if I misspoke. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to enter into a public hearing, consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located as Alexander Road, parcel R six seven one five eight, being approximately seventeen point four-six acres of the AO one ninety-six John B. Dupay, how do you say that?
Dupay.
Dupay? Can't we say it? Abstracted city of Stevill, E wrath County, Texas, from single-family residents, R one, single-family, five thousand square foot, R one point five. We have four or five, four people who've signed up to like to speak on this item. I'll call you up. First one will be Malcolm Dan. Is that right? Is it Dan?
Yes.
If you come up to the microphone and give your name and your address and you'll hook up here at the clock. There'll be three minutes up there. You'll have three minutes to speak to us. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Malcolm Dan. I live at seventeen forty-three Bull Elk. I'm a retired professional engineer and I now drive a bus for the school district.
Bless your heart.
I am here to register my objection to the change of the zoning for the new development of Elk Ridge. I bought my house there on Bull Elk primarily due to the character of the neighborhood. The proposed plan for the addition will change that character entirely and consequently seriously devalue our homes. We have no objection to the current zoning or construction under that premise. We appealed to the zoning commission and no reason was given for this change at that time, just that somebody wanted it to be changed. So we did some digging and we discovered the twenty fifty comprehensive plan. This document discuss, discusses development for the city over the next twenty-five years and does seem to be more concerned with the demands of Tarleton State than it does with the current residents of the city. We were concerned, as has already been mentioned, by the lack of transparency regarding this, the evolution of this plan. The plan for the subdivision, as we perceive it, is being set up as a built-for-rent project, possibly intended for student housing. There could be as many as three or four individuals living any of these small residences and they will have come with accompanied vehicles, one assumes, as we are beyond walking distance from the campus. There's currently only one road connecting the, this, the previous phase with this phase, although we have discovered that a lot at the back has been purchased. And as you can see from the plan, there is clearly an intent to extend the road and possibly join up with the other end of Elk Ridge Drive, giving another route between the two neighborhoods. This raises serious concern over traffic. Our current neighborhood is very family-oriented. There are lots of kids always playing around and I don't know that this is in any way safe. We drop off, the school bus drops off kids at the entrance to the neighborhood and they have to walk through the neighborhood as it stands today without any sidewalks. On a personal note, I was actually hit by a vehicle while riding my motorcycle in the current configuration that we've got. So traffic is definitely a concern and with addition of all these other people, it's going to exponentially increase the risk. The twenty fifty plan char- says the character of existing neighborhoods should be prioritized. This zoning change is hardly consistent with that requirement. Furthermore, the plan states that good design should protect neighborhoods. This is clearly not being done. One only is to look at the monstrosity that we're currently seeing built on the corner of Dale and Tarleton, which overlooks, is a three-story building that overlooks single-family homes adjacent to it. I'm not sure how that ever happened. To use the twenty fifty terminology, how is this reasonable development? Or for that matter, how does the development, to quote the plan, add value to the surrounding community when quite the reverse is most likely the case? I would therefore, in conclusion, urge the council to review, refuse this zoning change.
Thank you, sir. I want to make a comment. It's not a, thank you very much. It's not a pro or a con. There is a bill before that's been out of Senate, that's in the House now, that will restrict, will eliminate the city's ability to restrict numbers of house, people and residents in the house. Do you remember the bill name?
The House bill is twenty-seven ninety-seven, but the Senate bill that's moving, that has passed the Senate and is currently on-
Basically eliminates our ability at all, you could put ten people in a three-bedroom house.
Is Senate Bill fifteen sixty-seven is the one-
And so if you have an issue with that, I'd encourage you to call your state representative and talk about that. And we can give you some, he can give you some help if that you need that. We also have Donna Bush. She'll give us your name and address and your notes to clock on the screen up here for three minutes.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll kind of knock on the table, give you some heads up that you're getting close.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. My name's Donna Bush. I reside at seventeen thirty-six Bull Elk. At the zoning meeting on April sixteenth, we heard mention the twenty fifty comprehensive plan. It sounds like the city is using this plan to ignore all the legitimate concerns presented by the families of Elk Ridge and justify pushing forward the rezoning solely because the city is in need of affordable housing. Ironically, that same plan documents that there is already affordable housing in Stephenville. Page forty-six and figure nineteen shows a housing affordable index score of a hundred and fourteen, indicating that housing is affordable in Stephenville. Quote, "Medium housing value and percent of income dedicated to a mortgage are equally low," end quote. In fact, your twenty fifty plan states that the median valley, value of a home in Stephenville is significantly lower than the rest of E wrath County. It's obvious the Planning and Zoning Commission is cherry-picking data to justify the city's desired outcome and they are eliminating data that opposes their viewpoint and supports Elk Ridge. In fact, your land use policy statements on page one seventeen are contrary to this rezoning request. Policy Statement Three is to quote, "Maintain the edge between rural and urban and prevent sprawling development that does not contribute to the character of Stephenville," end quote. How is this proposed sprawling development not destroying the character of Elk Ridge? Likewise, Policy Statement Five states, "To relieve pressure in neighborhoods by purpose-built student housing close to campus." Quite the contrary, this city is creating pressure in Elk Ridge and surrounding neighborhoods. Let's be honest, affordable housing is a guise for rental opportunities for students. After all, Tarleton is mentioned throughout the twenty fifty plan. No doubt there is a need for student housing, but not at the unreasonable price for an established family neighborhood. The developer is presenting, the developer is presenting a plan with twenty-nine five thousand square foot lots with houses ten feet apart, flanking the entire backside of Elk Ridge with an access road through Elk Ridge. Look at the plats. In my property, is my property going up in value when I'm standing in my backyard and I'm going to see eight possible two-story houses? I think that's ridiculous to even say that it's going to go up in value. Would you want to live there? Because I, I don't know if I do anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chuck? Chuck?
Yes, sir. I'd love to respond to some of the other things, but I do not have time.
You'll have three minutes. You'll watch the clock here. I'll-
I've got names of people I'm representing, so I thought the rules was that we have ten minutes for that.
Is that on here?
Did you not?
Hope you have five minutes then.
I think the rule, I think the rules require a certain amount of them to be physically present. Is that-
Are they here?
Okay. Here we go.
Jim, Miss Thirty-four, Bruce and Taylor?
Bruce, right there.
Okay. Okay. I think you have five minutes then?
It's ten.
Ten minutes, okay.
Ten minutes, yes, sir. Thank you.
We'll get the clock started here. Can you set it for ten?
Good, good evening, Mayor, council persons and Elk Ridge neighbors. I'm Chuck Bush, seventeen thirty-six Bull Elk Court, or Bull Elk Drive. I'm not here today to appeal to your sense of fairness or reason. We did that to Noah Bell with your planning and zoning meeting and pleaded with the commissioners to simply follow the purposes of Stephenville's existing zoning codes, Section one fifty-four point oh-two. I even read it aloud in that meeting. It covers almost every one of our concerns that you've heard about and you've seen in your letters. Unfortunately, the commissioners didn't honor that purpose. They merely checked a procedural box for an apparent predetermined conclusion to move this forward, this request forward. And worse, there was no meaningful discussion in that. Most of our concerns and questions were summarily dismissed. Transparency, infrastructure, traffic, congestion, privacy, noise, property value, and most importantly, safety, especially that of our kids. And there was no opportunity, just like today, to respond to questionable statements that were made and at that meeting by the only two persons that were in favor of this, which was the developer and his agent. The commissioners did discuss infrastructure some and their message about transparency was crystal clear. Mr. Killen stated to us that they met the minimum requirements notification as he did to you tonight. The minimum notification required by law. There's your next campaign slogan. We'll do the minimum for our citizens. Okay? In reality, only about twenty percent of the Elk Ridge residents were notified when one hundred percent will be affected. That's shameful to me. And in my book, twenty percent is total failure. And I'm certain that a hundred percent of the people in this room received the recent tax assessment notice. Did anybody not get that? And with that notice, no pertinent information was provided. No plan, no plat, no reason, no justification, just somebody wanted this to happen. And lastly, we were afforded only ten days to figure it all out. So you can see why we consider this an abject failure of civic responsibility. Give us information, answer our questions, consider alternatives or mitigations. At least acknowledge our concerns. And all said, the commission also failed you forwarding that, that day by forwarding this request for vote. These concerns are now public record. Most were outlined in my April tenth letter to the commission. They also heard about it at the public meeting and now you're hearing about it today. And you've received letters from many citizens. And please understand, we don't oppose a neighborhood there. We don't oppose development. When we built and purchased our homes, we knew there were plans to develop. We were promised Elk Ridge Phase Four would be similar to Phases One through Three. And I believe it's the same developer that's involved in all three phases. Granted, now there's a change name, so I, I'm not sure what difference that makes. And, but understand, we're not naive. We know promises can be broken and the city's not accountable for that. However, we made our home purchases and investment decisions with full knowledge of the protections of city zoning regulations in districts. Obviously to us, changing or removing those protections after the fact is neither fair, ethical nor safe. And keep in mind, the developer knew that parcel was owned R one when it was purchased. So today, I'm going to change my approach. We, we've talked about that enough. And I want to talk about something that I have not heard mentioned through this entire ordeal, and that's risk. I have a lot of experience with risk analysis and assessment mitigation. And through that lens, I propose to you that the decision before you, if approved, will place the city of Stephenville at an unacceptable level of risk. You can prove this to yourself by conducting a quick risk assessment. There's several government and business risk models available to you today, but I'll try to quickly walk you through one. It's called the SPE model. It's a simple formula that measures risk by multiplying severity times probability times exposure. While you may think your decision won't impact the city's level of risk or culpability, it certainly does. And this model can show you why. So let's work a model real quick. Okay? Worst-case scenario, we're, we're going to, only one element of one of our concerns, pedestrian safety. Worst-case scenario, an accident results in serious injury or death of a child. Okay, the accident's the event and the consequence is the injury or death. So in this model, severity is rated on a scale of one to five and it refers to the potential consequences of an event, the accident. One being none or slight and five being catastrophic. Hopefully everyone here agrees that losing a child is catastrophic. So that score is a five. The next factor is probability. It's also rated on a scale of one to five. And it refers to, given exposure, the likelihood that the consequences occur. One being impossible and five being very likely. What do you think? I'll be somewhat risk tolerant and give it a four versus a five because if you're risk averse, you could argue that it is very likely that a child would seriously be injured or killed if hit by a car. Okay? The last factor is exposure and it's rated on a scale of simply one to four. And this refers to the amount of time, proximity, volume and number of people involved in it. One being none and four being great. Again, I'll assign a mid-range three because vehicle time on the street, proximity to pedestrians and volume will also significantly increase. So the simple risk math, five times four times three equals sixty. And this score indicates high degree of risk. Correct immediately. A high degree of risk. Okay, now I agree with my wife. This is all a bit technical. So let me provide a, a simpler analogy here. Let's talk about a coin flip. If your head's always kind of person, tails is the worst possible outcome. Okay, tails you lose. So the severity of a tails is five. That's severity. Score of five. Everybody knows the probability of a coin flip is fifty-fifty, right? And does it get more mid-range than that? So probability would be the mid-range three. Now exposure is where it gets interesting. One flip, that exposure is minimal. Okay, so we're going to assign it a one. So that simple math, just on a coin flip analogy, five times three times one, that comes out to fifteen. And the risk model says that there's a slight degree of risk. It is possibly acceptable. What happens if you increase exposure? By adding a coin or simply flipping it twice? So severity doesn't change. We still don't want to see that, that tails come up. However, probability of seeing a tails goes up from fifty-fifty to seventy-five percent, increasing the probability factor from three to four. And we'll include that, or we'll conclude that one additional flip or adding a coin isn't a significant increase in volume, but still it's a minor bump. So we'll move that up from one to two. So again, in the coin flip analogy, the simple math, by flipping it twice, goes from five to four to two, score of forty. Now there is substantial risk and corrections required. What if we added five coins? What if we flipped five? What do you think the probability goes up to? Ninety-seven percent. That's almost certain. Ninety-seven percent. That's pretty high. And hopefully by this example, you can see the dire correlation between probability and exposure. And to put it in perspective, the decision before you won't impact severity in any risk model. Regardless of how you vote, it doesn't get worse than the death of a child. However, if you approve this request, it will facilitate this, the construction of medium-density housing with price points that attract investors. This will ultimately result in a predictable high volume of rental properties. Look no further than Sully Court to see this is not mere speculation. So you will be creating a high-volume rental operation and funneling that traffic through an established low-density family neighborhood. Elk Ridge has recently seen an increase in rentals occupied by unrelated adult males, or not males, adults, and corresponding increase in vehicle accidents, including property damage and personal injury. Our exposure will be significantly increased by a number of factors, including pure proximity, volume, reputation and number of vehicles on our streets. Not to mention the, the predictable age of rental occupants. And there's a reason why that age demographic has the highest insurance rates in the entire country. We also find it troublesome that you would require sidewalks to mitigate traffic and volume-related safety risk in the proposed subdivision while routing that very same traffic through an established family neighborhood with no sidewalks. Mind you, the pedestrian safety assessment covers only one- covers only one element of our many concerns. Due diligence would require a similar assessment of potential consequences of each of our concerns. So in conclusion, the proposed rezoning is grossly inconsistent with Elk Ridge Estates and the surrounding neighborhoods. The risks are known. Our concerns are now on public record. And basic risk control measures in the city zoning codes and the 2050 comprehensive plan dictate actions to reduce the very factors that you are considering significantly increasing. We strongly urge you to represent the interests of your current constituents by voting no. And lastly, please vote. We know that abstaining from voting is a bureaucratic concurrence with a majority favoring adoption of the matter. And we want to know how you vote. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Yes, sir. Next one is Megan White, Megan's. Is that right?
Megan White.
Is it Megan Whites? Give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for listening. My name is Megan Baloo Whites. I live at 1060 Antelope Trail. And I really just have two concerns. First of all, safety is my number-one concern. And then, of course, my property value. I've worked hard for what we have, and I just want it to stay that way. So please vote no to rezoning Phase Four of Bear Hill, or whatever it's called, I can't remember. But thirteen years ago, my husband Daniel and I chose to build our home. We were promised the same neighborhood would be developed all around us. I was even told that was the next phase. So I'm totally okay with that being developed. I just want it to stay the same that it was promised. We've worked hard in and around our house. We love working in the yard, and we take pride in our house. And we've kept our commitment to our community. We've paid our taxes. We've helped our neighbors. We've raised our boys to be good citizens. Now, our promised neighborhood is being compromised. Our home is on the corner of Elk Run and Antelope Trail. These two streets have at least three rental properties that I know of. Of course, there's places that I'm not sure about, but... And we all know that rental property comes with lots of vehicles. And also, lots of vehicles with... I mean, my boys both drive, so we have four vehicles at my house. So I understand, but... Several houses have five vehicles or more. Driving down Elk Run is very tricky. There's been several accidents just in front of my house, or on the side of my house by my garage. This happens in the blink of an eye when streets are overcrowded. Vehicles are definitely replaceable, and I'm not worried about my vehicle or anybody else's, but human life is not replaceable. So please help keep our children of Elk Ridge and our residents safe. And I also wanted to bring up, I had not heard anything about retail. I heard that tonight for the first time. So I just wondered about that as well. So thank you so much for your time.
Two more. One is Michael. Lusly, L-U-S-S-Y, L-Y-S?
That's for another item.
That's the next item, okay. All right, then we have one more. Get it up here, second. Wes, do you want to come speak? Give us your name and your address, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate all you do. We're grateful to be part of this community here. My name is Wes Bishop. I live at 2085 Riverfront Court. I am here on behalf of the Bear Hill subdivision proposal to you. I have several things to address. Did you guys get one of these sheets? It'll help identify some of the areas and concerns that have been spoken of. I just want to go through a few of the facts. One of the things was spoken about was transparency. Mr. Bush mentioned that, several others did as well. I stood here at the P&amp;Z meeting and offered any conversation they wanted to have, have invited open opportunities for conversation. We've provided all the information to the city and done all we can to communicate. I did mention that I don't do much with social media. I have a Facebook account. The picture that was put on it by my wife fifteen or twenty years ago is of me, well, it had to have been a little shorter than that because my oldest granddaughter is only nineteen. So about fifteen years ago, and she was sitting in my lap, and I get made fun of that all the time. But I don't see it, so it doesn't matter. Somebody else mentioned something about built-for-rent. These are single-family home lots. I want to continue to iterate that we do have some lots at the fifty-foot minimum dimension. None of them are minimum-sized for R1.5. All these are fifty by well over a hundred foot or much larger than that. In fact, the average lot size is over eighty-two hundred square feet. To talk about density factors in Elk Ridge, the first couple of phases over there, which there are three currently over in Elk Ridge, their buildable lots per acre is 3.3. This is about 3.8, so it's not three to one, or eight to one, or some of the things that have been spoken of. I did want to communicate that. This is sixty-seven single-family home lots. Again, the average lot size over there is about ten percent larger than R1 zoning. They are all big enough to house any house that's being built in Elk Ridge or has been built in Elk Ridge could fit on almost all of the lots here. I can't communicate to specifically the architectural stylings that will be, but these are for-sale individual lots that builders are going to build for new families who are coming this way. Our desire is to provide an opportunity for people to move into the community and be part of this community, welcome them and celebrate their victory and when they achieve their dream home. It's a well-designed, safe subdivision. Safety was mentioned, and children walking and playing in the streets mentioned. This comes with sidewalks. It comes with streets that are according to city subdivision requirements and setback requirements. And it is an opportunity for additional safety and a reduction in traffic. I think the chief, fire chief, spoke to some of that as well. I can't speak to the number of cars that are over in Elk Ridge. It does surprise me that there are homes with five or four or five or six cars in them. We are a very affluent neighborhood, apparently. Really grateful for the opportunity to be able to own homes and more cars than we have kids for. What a blessing that is.
Wes, can you summarize?
So in summary, we want to celebrate the new neighbors that get to realize the dream of homeownership and support the continued development and growth in the city of Stevenville. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Just hold on a second.
Mr. Bishop.
Hold on, hold on a second. Are you going to talk to Mr. Bishop? Go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The current zoning is R1 on this property.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
From your presentation, the majority of the homes you intend to build are on lot sizes that would comply with R1 requirements.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Don't shut that down. We don't have questions and answers in this stadium in public hearing.
That's what?
Okay.
That's right, I should have looked at you instead of Sarah.
That's right.
Okay, with that, is there anyone else who'd like to come speak in favor or opposition to the request? Can we give you your name and address?
Yes, sir, I've got my paper.
Okay, you'll get it to Sarah?
Yes, sir. My name's Jonathan Evans. I live at 1045 Antelope Trail. I actually own the home. We have multiple cars at our house. I have two Porsches, BMW. And I love living in Elk Ridge. I have a seventeen-month-old daughter. We go on walks Monday through Friday, every evening after work. It's my biggest priority. I'm allowed to, she walks around. We walk through the whole neighborhood, back and forth. She runs, jumps through puddles. It's slow, it's peaceful. When cars are coming, you can hear them down the street. We walk out of the way, and they pass. We live near where they will connect the two neighborhoods. That's my biggest fear. I love the expansion. I'm a business owner of three businesses. I think it's incredible. My fear is my seventeen-month-old daughter will be growing up, running around in the streets, playing four-square with friends. And there will be college, high school, young adult drivers, late for work, late for classes, zooming through the neighborhood. I ask that you don't stop the neighborhood from growing, but that you limit access to the neighborhood. Our neighborhood does not have sidewalks, does not have much room. Most of the time, two vehicles are parked on the same street, right across from each other, where one car can fit through. That's the only thing I ask. I'm grateful for y'all's time and allowing me to speak.
I'll put yours right here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Jonathan. Anybody else want to speak in opposition or in favor of the request? Seeing and hearing done, then we'll close the public hearing, and we can ask questions at this point, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dix?
My question for Mr. Bishop was if the zoning remains as R1...
You'll cut the microphone to Anthony Quick, so he'll get on record.
If the zoning remains R1, which it is currently, and you can develop by R1 standards, will you develop it by R1 standards, or is it 1.5 or no development?
It needs to be R1.5, and the reason for that is because there are some specific lots that have to be somewhat narrower in order to meet the current connections to the public works that exist out there, as well as the drainage requirements on the development. And that's why the request of R1.5.
Okay, and I haven't heard that prior to this, that the reason for that is to access other areas and to meet drainage requirements. I take it you've done a drainage study?
Based on the engineering design work that has already been done on the land itself and the requirement for public infrastructure, for streets and utilities, that was the requirement, and that's why we got to the R1.5. It is not for every lot out there at the fifty-foot width requirement. There's over twenty of them. I don't remember specifically how many of them are like that. But even those are well above the minimum R1.5 lot size. They may, a few of, some of them be fifty-foot wide, but they're much deeper than that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Juan?
We're hearing... Yes, we're hearing retail.
Say that again?
We're hearing retail out there. Where did that come from?
I would have no idea.
That was in Steve's definition of complete neighborhood in the comprehensive plan. Land use is a totally different thing from the comprehensive plan. No, sir. And this is not allowed in R1.5. Steve was simply giving the definition of complete neighborhood from the comp plan.
I asked him what that definition was.
I've got a question for Mr. Clayton. We did not approve the R1.5, and left it as R1. Is there still the need for the fire safety lane?
Still have to have that secondary means of egress, yes, Mayor.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Bishop, when I spoke about the NOx Gate earlier, is that something you'd be willing to put into your development?
Yes, we would be willing to do that.
Okay. My other question is, who are you? And you don't have to, I guess you don't have to tell me this, but who are you marketing these lots to? Are they the builders, are they individuals? Are they builders, and there are builders and individuals that you have history with?
Obviously, anyone who wants to build a new single-family home could purchase a lot, once they're available and ready for sale. The marketing is to the builders and developers in this area, the folks who build homes for these folks, the folks who built homes for in Elk Ridge Estates.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
With that in mind, next item is to consider approval. I apologize, my voice is about gone. Consider approval of orders for zoning property located at Alexander Road, parcel R67-158, being a property of seventeen-point-four-six acres of the AO-196, John Dupe, is that what you said?
Dupuy.
Dupuy. Abstracted in the city of Stevenville, Yarra County, Texas, from single-family R1 to single-family R1.15. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the rezon of case 8714 with ordinance 2025-zero-one-six.
A motion, I hear a second.
Second.
The motion is second, we'll proceed to vote.
Mayor, may I call for a roll call vote?
Yes, sir, just one second. I'll go by place. Place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Place three?
No.
Place four?
No.
Place five?
No.
Place six?
Yes.
Place seven?
Yes.
Place eight?
No.
That's four, is that right, four-four?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
It's eight. And I'll vote no. Motion, excuse me, motion fails. Next item, application number CUP 8737, send that to you, Steve. Looks like it.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, this is conditional use permit 8737. Mr. Trevor Hudson, representing Michael Plank, owner of NPH Ventures LLC, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an auto paint and body shop, a repair shop in the B2 Retail and Commercial District. This is for 902 Wolf Nursery, Block One, Lot Three of the DOS Edition, Phase Three, city of Stevenville. Previously, this property was brought to planning and zoning and the city council for a rezon to industrial. That is the heaviest use that we have in our zoning districts. And so it opened the door for a lot of different types of development. If approved to industrial, that request failed at city council. And so the rezon request was denied. Since that time, the B2 land use has come up for discussion at committee level. We've had two, I believe, two different committee discussions on this. And staff was asked to come back with a proposed ordinance revision that would allow for a conditional use permit in the B2 district for an auto paint and body shop. And so that ordinance was presented and reviewed by council and subsequently passed. So now we have the opportunity to grant conditional use permits for the auto paint and body type repair shops in the B2 district. And again, it's a conditional use permit, so it's something that is reviewed on a case-by-case basis. When that ordinance was passed, there was also a definition. We provided some clarification on the powers that the council would have for a conditional use permit. We did not enumerate all of those, but we did try to give some examples in the definition of what can be requested as conditional use or as a condition for the use permit if being considered for approval. And so tonight, we have Mike Lissis with us. He is representing Caliber Collision, and he is here to present to you his request on behalf of Caliber for a conditional use permit at 902 Wolf Nursery. Trying to be succinct in my comments to you because I know he has about a ten-minute presentation that he's trying to make tonight.
Apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
It's Lissy.
Lissy.
Lissy, I apologize, Mike. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. If no questions, I'm going to pass it over to Mike. Thank you.
While Mike's getting up, we'll take an opportunity for those who want to leave, give you an opportunity to do that without interrupting.
All right.
Mike, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Give your name and address.
Yes, sir, Mike Lissy. It's 1255 West 15th Street in Plano, Texas, with Cross Architects, representing National Property Holdings. I will go ahead and make this brief since it's been a fairly long evening for everybody. So with that in mind, I'm going to go through and try and answer any questions that I have heard in the past as part of this presentation. And then reserve the remainder of the time to just answer any questions that you may have as we move forward. So if you could advance to the next slide, please? You'll see next to the stadium, and then the adjoining tire shop and other businesses that are next door. And then if we move on to the next slide, you'll see kind of the aerial view overhead here. And one of the things that I want to point out here is that we do have continuous fencing around the property specifically for the purpose of screening any vehicles. So some things to point out here as a part of the operation for this type of facility. Any vehicle that is stored, if there is any damage to it, must be stored as a function of this property behind the fence. Furthermore, the way the business is operated, if there is any sort of damage to a vehicle, it has to be repaired within a certain timeframe. Typically, they do not take a vehicle for more than four weeks. The reason being, if the vehicle is that badly damaged, they are not going to do the repair on it. They will refer that out to someone else. In fact, that also includes, you know, turning away a vehicle if it is so substantially damaged that it cannot be repaired at this facility. Next slide, please. So on this slide, there's a couple of things that we can go through relatively quickly. And if you'll just advance, I think it's about five spots, you'll see some colored elements pop up on the plan. All right. So that would be the office there, just to make sure people can orient themselves. Next portion would be the detail bay. This is where any vehicle is washed after being repaired. The next one would be the lift. This is where they do their inspections for the vehicle, to make sure that it is actually something that is reparable. The next one would be the frame rack. This is where they do any adjustments to the frame in order to make sure it's repaired. And the last part here would be the one that usually gathers the most questions, and that would be the paint booth. In this case, it's a single paint booth. It is fully enclosed. This is part of a fully air-conditioned facility, meaning that when it's in operation, the only time the doors are open is whenever they're moving a vehicle in or out of the space. The rest of the time, it's to keep the staff cool, and it also functions as a second barrier, both for sound, temperature control, as well as any sort of elements that might be noise or anything like that, as well as a function of the paint booth. That's particularly important in the wintertime, whenever it's cold outside, the reason being that these paint booths do actually heat up a fair bit whenever they bake the paint. In this case, things to point out, as far as the booth, it does have its own fire suppression system. In addition to that small bump out you'll see on the side, which is where they store materials, any sort of materials are stored at the minimums, not at the maximums, but at the minimum requirements in order to operate. They operate on what's called a just-in-time type service, which means they only order the materials when the materials are needed. This both saves space, which is at a premium in this type of facility, and also makes sure that at any point, there is not going to be an excess of stored material. We'll go ahead and move on to the next slides, and I'll answer some additional booth items. So again, on this elevation, want to go ahead and point out that what you see in terms of the screening is a slatted fence. This is done in accordance, a slatted fence. This is black vinyl slats that are inside of a chain-linked fence system. The reason for that being that that provides the maximum view control while still being easy to maintain, operate. It also holds up well over time, particularly in states like Texas where we see interesting weather, shall we say. Next slide, please. So this is just a different view to kind of indicate the modifications to the front of the building, in addition to a different view showing how any sort of vehicle storage is back there. So as you'll notice from the prior slide in the overhead, there are vehicles back there. We specifically included this to demonstrate this is accurate in terms of how it will be screened. Steve specifically requested that we do that, so this is as close as we can get to reality. The next slide, please. And this would be the last slide, so you can barely see one vehicle through the back of that fence if you were standing in the lot. In reality, it's usually even harder still to see them, because the computer does a finer-grain job of actually catching up. So the next slide is to talk a little bit more about the booths. So what you see on the right-hand side here is the booth itself. That is what's called a downdraft booth, and at the risk of getting technical here, which I know everybody loves, what it means is air comes down from the top and is exhausted out the bottom. So there's two reasons for that. One, it's better for modern vehicles. Two, it's far better for whoever the painter is working inside, even if they are wearing their PPE. And three, it functions a little bit more smoothly as far as the filtration system is concerned. So once it goes underneath, it actually moves under the floor. You'll see those stacks slightly to the left of the booth where it returns back up through the filtration system, and the air that's exhausted is actually cleaner than the air that would be outside of the shop to begin with. So generally speaking, that's a pretty important thing. Filters are exchanged on an as-needed basis, not to exceed, I believe it is three months. It may actually be monthly. I don't want to speak incorrectly on that. And then anything else, as far as the, any emission, sound, or other items, follows the Texas Commission on Environmental Control Quality, excuse me, TCEQ, well exceeds the minimums there. So the last couple of slides here, you'll see some examples of buildings as we found them. So if you'll click to the next two or three images there, you'll see this was an example of a typical facility. This is by no means the worst. We have done buildings that quite frankly should have been condemned and managed to resurrect them. But this is an example of a typical facility. And then if you look at the next slide, you'll see the closest shot we can come to in terms of what the improvements are. Now, this is something that is typical. If you'll go to the next image, please, you'll see the same thing for the entrance, and then finally, the last one being the shop area. So as you can see, the shop floor is ground down, everything sealed. This is what you can expect to see inside of this building. With that, I will turn this back over to you. If you have any questions, or if the community does, I will be more than happy to answer them if I missed anything.
Question, Mr. Michael?
Michael?
Yes, sir.
Is the company willing to consider a different type of fencing?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Is the company willing to consider a different type of fencing?
Yes, sir. If there is a different type of fencing that the council has in mind, yes.
Any other questions? Hearing done, we're going to enter into public hearing on application. CUP 8737. Is anybody else? Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you. And I'm sorry about butchering your last name. My last name, I get butchered all the time. I say, I don't care what they call me, just call me.
No worries. I get called all kinds of fun names.
Fowler Fun. Yes.
Yes.
Anybody want to come speak in favor or opposition to the application? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and consider application of ordinance approval of conditional use permit to allow the operation of an auto paint body shop repairing in a B2 retail and commercial district for a property known as 902 Martha Wolf Nursery Road, parcel R 72994, being block one, lot three of the DOS Edition Phase Three, city of Stevenville, Yarra County, Texas. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we approve ordinance number 2025-0-17.
16.
16.
16. No.
This is, they didn't pass, okay?
Yep, 16.
Do I hear of a second?
Second.
Brandon? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. Yes, sir.
I would like to offer an amendment to that.
You want to offer an amendment? Okay.
I would like to amend the motion to require a, a more attractive wood, not visible through it, type of fencing around it, and to maintain a landscaping in the front as part of the conditional use permit.
On this?
As decided by who?
By city staff.
That makes, did you understand the request? That's the motion, we have a second chance. So it's a solid wooden fence and landscape in the front?
Yes. I didn't want to speak. Yes, sir. I didn't want to speak out of turn.
Go ahead.
Typically, we do not recommend wood fences, because they do require more maintenance. That said, I'm certainly not going to speak against council if that's council's wishes.
Be all stone, I guess.
That would be expensive, yes, sir. But if you would like us to look at an alternate material using wood fences and additional landscaping, subject to review of city staff, yes, sir, we will do so.
Is it okay with you?
Okay. I've been requested to have a roll call vote on this. We don't have, we don't have a second yet. Do we have a second on this, sir? Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir. I just want to clarify with Mr. Cook. Are you thinking like what we built out at the secret area, that fence that we put on Airport Road?
Yeah, or even a little bit better than that.
It's pretty solid.
It is. It is. It's really solid.
You won't accept that, Mr. Cook?
Something is very decorative. I mean, you're looking at a prime, a nice location, right across from the $39 million stadium, and visitors are going to be coming there and all that kind of stuff, and frankly, what you're proposing just doesn't look real well, look great. And after the first few windstorms, it's going to look really crummy. So make it look nice. One of the reasons that we did a additional use permit is so that you could have stipulations like this in it. As a matter of fact, most of the people on this council specifically asked for a, that we were going to have some input into this, and that was the reason to do a conditional use permit. So for that, that's why I offered it, and if somebody wants to second it, we'll have a motion.
I hear a second.
Second.
The motion is second. Now we'll proceed to vote on the original motion to, as amended. No, after the amendment first?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand the amendment? You want to restate it, Gerald?
Just that it will be a, that a different type of fencing would go up, that would be a decorative, architecturally-nice-looking fencing. We'll leave it up to city staff to review that, and that outside landscaping be maintained and kept.
Is Steve, you okay with that? Understanding that? You'll be able to enforce it, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to have a voice vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So the motion then is to approve the request, the permit with the application with that amendment to it, and have been asked for a roll call vote. Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
No.
Place four.
No.
Sorry, my hands are a little slow with this stroke thing. Place five.
No.
Place six.
Yes.
Place seven.
Yes.
Place eight.
No.
So that's one, two, three, four, five. The three, is that right?
Four, four.
Four, four.
Okay. Then I'll vote yes. With those stipulations. Okay. Thank you, sir. Motion passes. Next item is committee assignments. Is that on? Why is that on?
That's just the title of his item. Steve.
Mayor, Council, again, once before, we were, for the Development Services Committee, and we were discussing, at the request of one of our local developers, Mr. Joel Allen, the possibility of repealing the 40% lot coverage requirement that is found in all residential districts across our zoning and land use ordinance. Mr. Allen had pointed out that this 40% limitation of being able to, that relates to the primary structure, so you can only build up to 40% of the total lot availability, would limit his ability to build in certain districts, particularly our R2.5 district, by limiting the square footage of the first elevation of the home, making it difficult for developers to remain profitable, because they can only use that small fraction of their property. And so committee recommended that this go to Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, reviewing public hearing, and the commission did that at April 16th, and then recommended that it come back to City Council with favorable recommendation. I used to provide a little bit of background on the research that we did. The 40% limitation in some zoning districts does actually cut back on the buildable space in comparison to the setback requirements of each zoning district. So we compared the 40% to the setback reductions and compared those two square footages. And in some cases, the 40% is more restrictive than the actual setbacks on the lot itself. So speaking with Mr. Allen, I asked him if the setbacks would be appropriate, or if he felt those would be a fair compromise, and he indicated that that would be fine with him, that he felt that was reasonable. And so I have a table on your staff report that shows you which areas actually fall a little short when we use that 40% number instead of the setback requirements. Many of those actually match, and I believe that's because the intent behind the setbacks was to meet the 40%. So some of it's redundant, some of it's a little more restrictive, and in some cases, the setbacks actually allow for a bigger footprint than the 40% would, some smaller than the footprint, or than the 40% would. So again, P&amp;Z reviewed this at the committee assignment, recommended that the council move forward with this. I believe the vote was five to two, but it was indeed a favorable vote. And with that, Mayor, Council will be glad to answer any questions.
Of course, Steve.
Mr. Killen, is there an alternative percentage or formula to use, or is it strictly driven by the setback requirements?
I believe, again, that the setbacks were really designed around that 40%, and in most cases, that proves true. So I don't really have any real concern about eliminating the 40%, because I think the setbacks are very closely aligned with that 40%, only in some areas. The R2.5 is, I guess, a zoning district that staff presented and council approved a few years ago, and we did that really without having any input from consultants or anything on that, so that might be why our numbers are off just a little bit in comparison to some of the other districts that were done by consultants at the time in 2018. Did check with Public Works. There's a kind of a conversation in passing, Nick, I hope you remember this, but we did talk about would this require or cause any concern in regards to detention or impervious, increase in impervious surfaces that would create problems in development down the road. We didn't really see any significant impact to that overall, so I believe, not just put words in his mouth, but I believe he was in agreement that there, this is really not anything to get too overly concerned about. But if it's a crutch that gives the developers a little more room to be profitable in a time where affordable housing is so difficult to come by, then certainly that felt it was worth bringing to you for consideration, so.
Other questions for Steve?
So from the staff's perspective, as far as Development Services and Public Works, the removal of this will not impede development, nor will it create any health or safety concerns or any other issues for the city that would be adverse to the development?
None, none that we can foresee, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hearing that, we have a public hearing on this one, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Have to enter into public hearings, is this ordinance? Does anybody want to come and speak in favor or opposition to the request? Hearing done, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'd make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025-017, repealing the coverage limitation that has been discussed.
Second.
Have a motion as a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next one is consider authorizing the city manager initiating negotiations and entering into professional services contract. Want to take that, Jason? Steve's going to do it, okay? Even though he's not city manager, okay.
Mayor, Council, as you know, we went through a adoption of a new comprehensive plan last year, actually adopted in August of '24, and part of that process was understanding that our land use regulations would have to be updated so we could fully implement that comprehensive plan. Much of our current land regulations do not fall in alignment with that comprehensive plan, so in January, we initiated the process to go out and solicit RFQs? Get those two mixed up, and don't do those very often in my line of work. So asked for RFQs, we got five responses. We had a committee of three people, Councilman Cook, our city engineer, Mr. Michael Shelton, so appreciate Nick allowing him to spend some time on this, and then I was involved as well. We had a little bit different process this time, where we weren't aware of each other's comments. We met separate, we did not meet as a committee, so we reviewed these independently. We submitted our scores to the purchasing department, and then we got And then we got the rubric back. And the unanimous decision was Kended Keest. And so we are asking that you authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations with Kended Keest for the rewrite of our land use regulations and hopefully the development of unified development code.
Questions for Steve? Hear a motion?
Comment?
Sure. Get after it.
It's, my opinion that the twenty-fifty comprehensive plan is a terrain wreck. I know that it went through a lengthy process. We have spent a significant amount of money on it already. It does not reflect, in my opinion, the values consistent with the development that we need to see in our community. If we follow that comprehensive plan, it's gonna throw virtually everything that we've done for the last fifty years out the window. And the community that we see twenty years from now will not resemble what we have today. I think because of that, the plan itself is flawed. And throwing more money at the plan that I don't believe is a good plan, to me, doesn't seem to make any sense. I think we need to go back and revisit that plan. I hate to lay it on staff, but we, as a council, may want to have a workshop or do something to try to go through that plan, correct what I consider to be some of the inadequacies, and then move forward with trying to implement those. Zoning is significant for the growth of the city, but it's also significant for the long-term aesthetics and look and community pride. When you change zoning as dramatically as that recommends, and it was mentioned to us several times tonight, that plan, people are looking at it and people are considering it. And I think to further expend city resources to find someone to help us implement something that I think is detrimental to our community, I think is a mistake. I think we need to table this. And I would make a motion to table this discussion until we have an opportunity to review that plan further and make decisions on whether we really want to use that plan or make modifications to it before we move forward with it.
Do we have a second to table motion? Hear none, that motion fails. I have a motion to approve the negotiations.
Mayor, I move that we approve the negotiations.
I hear a second to that. Hear a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed?
Opposed, no.
Go, we'll go roll call. Place one.
No.
So you're saying no to the giving in permission? Okay, place two?
Yes.
Place three?
No.
Place four?
No.
Place five?
No.
Place six?
No.
Place seven?
No.
Eight?
No.
Okay, motion fails then.
Can I ask for some direction for staff then? Do we want?
I really don't. I'm gonna give you some correction. Let's have a.
No, they voted on the motion, they just turned it down, sir.
Yeah. So. Giving instructions to have a workshop at the council.
I'm sorry, sir? First.
And it was disapproved.
They turned it down, sir. Okay, sorry.
We're giving instructions to bring a workshop to council, how about that? That was what next recommended. So let's bring a workshop and let's consider it the next, in the upcoming meeting. We're gonna have one in June, is that right? A budget workshop?
Yes.
We just did it at that time, is that too late? Steve?
I don't think, it's my opinion that we need to have a workshop specifically on this because a budget workshop is gonna be a significant investment of time for staff.
I'm asking his opinion.
Yeah, I guess we'll notify all the people that submitted that we don't want to redo the land use plan, or land use codes.
You're asking for direction?
I am, I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm kind of struggling because we've put about twenty-four months of a trail to get to this point that was all adopted.
Well, but tonight it failed, so they're not wanting you to do it.
I know, so.
So the question is, you asked for direction, I'm asking you to have a meeting with the council.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item, he has financial board, I haven't seen Monica in the room, is she?
She's here.
Is she around the corner?
Yes.
Come on, Monica.
You're up.
She's all thirty-six, eight. I'll try to keep this short. Mayor, council, this is the budget report for the period ending March thirty-first. We're halfway through the fiscal year. Things are about as what we anticipated. So for our sales tax, I mean, property tax, we received a hundred and seven thousand in the month of March, which is four hundred thousand increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. It's ninety-eight percent of our budget, and that's about fifty, fifty-one thousand more than we anticipated. We received seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand of sales tax in March, which is sixty-four thousand or one percent more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. The amount collected is fifty-four percent of our budget, and that's a hundred and ninety-two thousand higher than anticipated. Of the twenty-seven point two million revenue received to date, sixty-one percent was received in the general fund, twenty-three percent was received in the water wastewater fund, four percent was received in debt service, three percent was received in our landfill fund, and three percent was also received in our stormwater drainage fund. We received sixty-three percent of our total budgeted revenue through March, which is two million more than anticipated. That's due to taxes, licenses and permits, interest and other revenue. We've received ninety, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand less revenue through March than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to intergovernmental. Last year, we received some money from Charlton, something, cares money that are non-recurring, so. Of the twenty-three point nine million spent to date, forty-seven percent was expended in the general fund, thirty-seven was expended in the water wastewater fund, four percent was expended in our stormwater drainage fund.
How close is the, Monica, the expenditures by fund, wastewater and the revenue? Can you go back to that other slide?
Wastewater was twenty-three percent on the revenue and thirty-seven percent on the expenditures.
Say that one more time, please.
The revenue, we collected twenty-three percent.
Of the total budget?
Of the total budget. And now this is, when we, when we talk about, what I'm talking about here is of all the revenue, twenty-three percent went to the water wastewater fund.
So is our wastewater and water fees keeping up with the expenditures? Where I'm getting back, no, that's a different question. Ask Monica.
I think so. I'd have to dig into that a little deeper.
Future council, I'd like for you to come back and explain to us where we are on that.
Sure.
And also the plans for the rate increases we talked about.
Okay, great, because I have some, yeah, we can break things down by fund. Some of the information that's in there, if you'll look at like the budget variance report and the prior year comparisons, they have both the revenue expense for each fund.
I think we'll do it in here with the slides, so we can look for transparency because we're asking the rate increases.
Yes, sir. So we received four percent in the stormwater drainage fund and in the debt service fund. And then three percent was expended in TIF, the TIF fund and the landfill fund. We've expended forty-three percent of the total budgeted expenditures through March. That's seven million dollars less than anticipated. That's due to personnel contractual and capital outlay. We spent four point four million less on expenditures through March than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to capital outlay. And we spent a lot of money on the East Side Sewer and some of the other twenty-twenty-two bond money, which as we spend it, we don't continue to spend it. SEDA has received an overall fifty-four percent of budgeted revenue through March, which is fourteen thousand less than last fiscal year to date due to interest income, and eighteen thousand more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes. SEDA has spent an overall thirty-three percent of budgeted expenditures through March, which is sixty-four thousand more than last fiscal year to date due to personnel and capital outlay, and a hundred and ninety-two thousand less than anticipated due to contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. Any questions?
Questions for Monica? As always, thank you, ma'am.
I'm up next.
Mr. Sanford.
No.
Put up a clock.
I have the quarterly investment report.
Okay, do the quarterly investment.
Sorry. This is our quarterly investment report for the period ending March thirty-first. Our total market value of our cash and investments on March thirty-first was forty-four million, sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. This is allocated eight percent in demand accounts, two percent in our cash and money market accounts, four percent in certificates of deposits, thirty-five percent in the Techstar investment pool, and fifty-one percent in our tech pool investment pool. Our cash and investments accounts earned, four hundred and sixty-one thousand in interest for the quarter. Our average yield to maturity for all account types for the quarter was four point oh-eight percent. The average yield to maturity for just our investment accounts for the quarter was four point two-nine percent. And our benchmark, the average yield to maturity for the three-month treasury bill for the quarter was four point two-one. So we're slightly above that when we're just looking at investments. The average weighted maturity in days of the portfolio was ten point five-one days. We're very liquid. It was, I think, two point something last time. So we went out a little bit longer to try to capture some better interest rates since they're falling. Is there any questions on that?
Questions for Monica? Who's on the committee that decides where the investments are? We did that once, I talked about who makes the decision. Is it you individually or is it Toby?
It's the finance department that typically does that. And we, what we do is, it's in our finance investment policy what we limit ourselves to on what we can do.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Sanford, put the clock up. No, you're speaking on behalf of one person.
But she works harder than ten people.
She does do that.
So there you go. Thank you. I think first of all, we all just need to breathe for a little bit. Just a lot of tension in the air right now, so we're gonna just need to breathe and maybe have another prayer, right? I don't know. I know my wife usually prays whenever I come up here, but I am, by the way. I'm gonna be careful because I am in the running for pope still, I think. But anyway, I just want to see how long this is. The, in two thousand and four, on this day, the actual last episode of Friends occurred, which tells us how old we're getting, but I think we just aged another twenty years tonight. In nineteen fifty. Yes, right, yes. I'm not gonna comment on that, sir. Do I?
I said, thank you.
Yes, not gonna comment on anything related to, well, there'll be a few age jokes probably. In nineteen fifty-four, Roger Bannister became the first to record a sub-four-minute mile on this day. But this is an interesting thing. In nineteen ninety-nine, the fastest was sixteen seconds faster. And when you think about that, so there's a lot of improvement that happens over time. You've been coughing a little bit. The American Lung Association held its first meeting on this day in nineteen oh-four. Nineteen fifty-seven, the last broadcast of I Love Lucy, which y'all probably remember, I won't say who.
I was there in kindergarten that year.
Yeah, see, there you go. I'm gonna be careful again. And then Elon Musk, he's founded SpaceX on this day twenty-three years ago today. So that was kind of neat. The only birthday I'm gonna say is Sigmund Freud was in eighteen fifty-six, but he died in nineteen thirty-nine when he slipped. You'll get that soon enough. All right, now we're gonna go on to this. Actually, I'm here today to first thank you guys for your service, but I wanted to talk a little bit about SEDA in the sense that today, or actually this week, is actually our tenth anniversary of existence. We were, life was breathed into this world when the citizens overwhelmingly voted in the existence of what became Stevieville Economic Development Authority. And it's been kind of fun. I can't speak for the first couple of years. I got here in two thousand and eighteen and was thankful I wanted to carry on. I was thankful for Councilman Cook, who was on the SEDA board at the time. And I know that we joke a lot about different things, but his leadership in economic development over the years has been unbelievable as we, as was witnessed earlier today in your writing, and going back and recognizing the FMC contribution and that continuation that occurs even today, this many years later. So thank you, sir, and thank you for entrusting me to take on some of that. I don't know if it was because you thought I wouldn't be as good so it'd make you look better, or if, or if maybe we had a chance to continue on and.
We just figured you couldn't miss it.
Well, I will try. And by the end of my comments, you might think I have. But, no, but one of the things, I talked to my board about this earlier today. When you go ten years, there's a chance for some slumps in there. There's a chance to maybe tail off and not do as much as you did. But just in the last twelve months, the last fiscal year, we have announced or opened Trojan Steel, Southwest Concrete, Amazon Distribution, Spring Hill Suites, the New Bosque River Tap House, Cielo, Cavender's Boot City, Seven Brew, Project Bridge, which is near the museum, and at least seven more facade grants. And I know I'm leaving out a few others. I'll tell you, on the average, economic development organizations in today's world averages about three projects a year. We average between ten and twelve projects a year. And in addition to that, we've purchased and moved into our world headquarters. We won a statewide workforce development award. Our annual retail sales have grown north of two billion dollars and more than one half billion, subject to sales tax. And our retail trade area has grown sixty-five percent since two thousand and eighteen. So all of those things that are happening whenever we bring in the other ones, of these businesses. And yes, we're concerned about our existing businesses, but even with the new ones, we have sixty-five percent more people that are coming into town to take over some of the burden of spending the money here for our restaurants and our retail establishments and so forth. Obviously, we can add in the FMC expansion, which I didn't mention today, but it's in excess of fifteen million dollars to their plant that they're going to put in there, which will be another several, over seven hundred thousand in additional payroll and quite a bit done to their facility as well as to some new production lines that they'll be having over there. So that's a good, good sign. Our Career Academy, which we talked about frequently, but we did just finish our Career Club, Career Academy for our second year yesterday, yesterday, Monday, yesterday. Thank you. And now, after all of this that has happened, we have now put sixty-five kids through that program who are now eligible and going to be at the top of the list for new positions in our community. So we're solving workforce issues, one kid at a time. But with those sixty-five kids, this is a workforce program that is unlike anything else in the state and is considered one of, if not the best, one of the best programs in the entire state of Texas. These sixty-five kids are going out there, and they will automatically have a job offer by our industry partners. And that doesn't mean they're gonna take them because they may have some other choices in which they want to pursue. But to have these not only go through a program, but to be offered a position, that's a pretty good program. I would also like to encourage, I want to thank you for all of your careful consideration on things today. We would ask, SEDA has asked, and I was texted by virtually every board member tonight, we're gonna need some direction on the housing situation. We've had a lot of things that have gone up and gone down on the housing situation. We're gonna have to figure that out. We get asked as much as anybody, and as we continue to recruit people, we do have an awful lot of folks that need housing. And yet we approve some, we turn some down. We don't know where this is going. We gotta have some direction on that, too. And we are offering to help in any way possible, if you need it. Not that we know any more or any less than anybody else, but certainly we want to be a part of, at the table whenever we talk about housing. We gotta figure this out. We've got a lot of people coming in, a lot of people that want to come in, and that's exciting for us. So we're excited to continue our area of it. We've mentioned again that in two weeks, we'll be at our largest recruitment opportunity in Las Vegas. The mayor has gone with us last, wow, a lot of years. And we'll be going with us again this year.
I got my cowboy hat.
Do what's that?
I got me a cowboy hat.
And you're gonna need it because we're gonna be, we're gonna be pointed out, right? People know who we are, and they're green-lighting us many, many times. We talked about other things, Councilman Greenhalgh. We talked about another one here just earlier in the day, didn't we? Sometimes we get greenlit on some of these projects, and they just need franchisees. Sometimes they come in as corporate stores or opportunities. But many times when they move in, they're gonna need some housing, and we gotta continue to push forward in that area. So any way we can help in that regard, please let us know. But thank you for your service. Any questions?
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor makes a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Well, everybody jumps to that one. See, Jeff, what you do is you gotta do that part real quick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, council on May twentieth will be council committee meetings. We'll also have a special council meeting for a tourism item that evening. And then Monday, May twenty-sixth, city offices will be closed and observance of Memorial Day. That's all I have.
We end.
I just wanted to say again how proud we are of our Officer Stone and Deputy Tully for their award tonight. That is a wonderful thing, and we're blessed to have amazing first responders and officers and deputies that are around us and taking care of us. And lastly, I completely forgot to mention my daughters in my thank you speech earlier, and they already texted me and said, thanks for not mentioning me. Thank you to my daughters, my two son-in-laws, and my beautiful grandson for supporting me, for being up here as well. So that's all I have.
Gerald.
Tonight, we've had an interesting meeting. For people that are watching and all of you that are here, this is what it's not supposed to be. It's not supposed to be other than messy sometimes, and it is. We don't always agree. Now, I know that some of you have been coming to what I often say, gee, well, it's just all cut and dried. They are... Have all made their minds up and everything like that. You find out that's not the case, and you saw that here tonight. We had, what, two votes? It was four, four to four?
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
And so forth. That's the way it... I mean, we don't always agree, and we hopefully deliberate and listen to what people say and listen to the comments that are being made, and then make a mind up individually, not as a group, individually, and then we take a vote. And if it goes your way, great. If it doesn't, that's fine, too, because we're all in it together, and we're all gonna be here together and everything. And that's the way democracy works. And so, with that, thank you all to my fellow councilmen and all, because I think all of you did good, frankly.
Blessings for the rain. Boy, we've needed it, and when it shuts off this summer, it'll be gone, so we better enjoy what we have. Not but mine. Every time.
I want to congratulate Sarah and the mayor and everybody who took part in the youth council. I think that is a great improvement to get young people involved in city government and hopefully state government in the future. There's a lot of promise in our community with those six, seven students.
There were six and seven.
Six students for them to take the initiative to be a part of the change. That says a lot about our community and the students that we have living here. Also, we'd like to congratulate Ally and Daryl and Lee Ann and everybody who were able to make that travel Texas... What is it? Sorry, I lost my train of thought. What was it called?
Tourism.
Tourism-friendly community certification. That's also a huge honor for our city to be part-
We're on the Grand Slam scene.
To be part of the forty in the state of Texas. Mother-Son Mayhem is this Thursday at the city park, and that's a big event that Darren and his crew puts on, and I know it's greatly appreciated by the moms in the community, be able to take their sons out and ride monster trucks and do cool things in the city park. And then, tonight, when we had all these people standing up and giving their opinions, and you're always more than welcome to follow, sir, for P and Z, any sort of boards and commissions. I think it's a great thing that you're able to come out and speak your mind and have your opinions heard. And you're more than welcome to have your opinions heard on P and Z and BOA and all of the other boards and commissions that we set, so thanks, everybody.
David.
Yes, sir. First, I want to congratulate my fellow council members who re-sworn in today. It's a pleasure to work beside each and every one of you every single day. I want to thank Larry Joe and Martha for another very successful Larry Joe Taylor festival. Brought a lot of people to our community. It was in our police officers and Sheriff's Department, everybody in the fire department that kept everybody safe during that week-long festival. I had a good time. And I really... We appreciate them every year when they bring commerce to our city. Need to remember it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and that rap missed next. It's also Nurses Week, so two of the best professions that we have out there, so we need to remember them. And then, I kinda wanna echo what Gerald said. You know, we saw the beauty of democracy tonight. We don't always have to see eye to eye, but we're up here to figure it out for our community, and it's a pleasure to keep doing that. Thank you.
Brandon.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all our friends and neighbors who came out and participated tonight and helped us make the sausage, I guess, tonight. I'm just seeing how it's made, but actually got their hands in it. And that's all I've got.
Hon.
Chief Isbell? I looked out my window Saturday morning and saw one of your bright, shiny red trucks parked across the street in front of my neighbor's house. And of course, when you see that, what do you automatically think? Something bad has happened. But being the nosy neighbor that I am, I waited until they came out and found out that they were actually performing a public service for her because her smoke alarm was not functioning correctly. I know that we've mentioned this in the past, but I just wanted to put another plug in for your department. If they have issues and they need help with smoke detectors, smoke alarms, all those kinds of things, our department stands ready to help them in any way that we can. And I want to thank you and thank your department for doing that, because that's a huge service for our community and helps a lot of the people who are more mature and who aren't able to climb a ladder or do things like that, and that makes that safe for them and provides that valuable resource for them in that smoke alarm and smoke detector. Thank you. Please pass along my appreciation to your department, sir.
Absolutely.
That's true.
Thank you, Mayor. It is a big class. I just want to make two comments, again, recognizing Councilwoman Lee Ann Durfee. She's gonna be bringing to the council a recommendation for some marketing for the city of Stevieville soon, right?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be tremendous. I'm really excited. Can't wait to hear it. Also, something to consider for your state legislatures, legislature, senators, and representatives. This year, the legislature had, what is it, twenty-four billion dollars unfunded, unspent from last session?
I think that's right.
And then, twenty-seven billion dollars in the rainy day fund. That's fifty billion dollars of money, and I've made a recommendation to several of them down there. What they do is they rebate some of that back to the city in the sales tax collections so we can actually do some things like roads and wages, et cetera. So, you might have... If you have an opportunity, I'd encourage you to suggest that as another... That they need to rebate some of that money so they just go and spending it like they do all every session, because it's a balanced budget. They just spend every penny of it. Okay? With that, in compliance with the provision of the Texas Department of Business Law of Chapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Annotated Concordance with Section 551 Deliberations Regarding Real Property and 551-071, Consultant Attorney over pending litigation. We will be back.